Okay, so we can get started.
Can I call to order?
Yep.
It's a, I call to order the November tenth. A Board of Supervisors of Newtown Township, uh, meeting to order. It is now seven fifteen, seven seventeen. We had executive session at six o'clock, which we discussed. Uh. For, for litigation matters. One was a improper use of a garage as a second residence. Imp- a second one was an improper use of a single family residence as an Airbnb. Fourth was a front yard porch and non-conforming front yard. And second, second was a front yard fence on a corner lot. And in personnel matters, we discussed board appointments. Uh, Mr. Neese, can you call the roll?
Mr. Al, Mr. Altieri.
Present.
Uh, Ms. Roberts Lightcap.
Here.
Ms. Chanlis. Mr. Russo is.
Here.
Oh, he is.
Yeah, I'm Mike.
I'm here.
San Francisco.
Here.
Uh, your engineer, solicitor, and manager are here.
Uh, and can we take a moment of silence, uh, please? And the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, section five point one, consider approving the agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Motion was made by, um, Supervisor San Francisco and approved by, seconded by Supervisor Chanlis. All any, there's no board comment, right? Any, um, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion approved unanimously. Um, section six, public comment for agenda items only. Any members of the public would like to stand up and make a comment about the agenda items? Seeing none, I'm moving to, um, section seven point one. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from the October twenty seventh, twenty twenty five meeting? Motion.
So moved.
By, uh, by Supervisor Chanlis, seconded by Supervisor, uh, San Francisco. All those, uh, any board comment? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion approved unanimously. Uh, section eight, presentations, eight point one, but fire truck, that was close. Fire truck equipment presentation.
Are we live here? Can you hear me?
No.
For those that don't know me, I'm Kevin Robinson, uh, the assistant fire chief with the Newtown Fire Company. Uh, by about, what is it now? Almost a year since you guys have purchased and moved forward with our new, uh, rescue engine, which should be coming in about ten months. So it'll be here sooner than we think, uh, which is fantastic to hear. Um, with that process, now it's time to look at getting the equipment that we need to put on the vehicle. Which the past six or seven months, we've been diligently trying to figure out what is the best equipment to move forward with in, uh, our fire company for this, this, uh, specific apparatus. Having multiple vendors out, we've trying to specialize in the vehicle rescue aspects. That's the, that's the big price tag that we're looking at here. Um, so we want to make sure we're getting the correct equipment for the town and the future of the town. So we've had multiple days, uh, bringing in different vendors, cutting up plenty of cars, flipping cars over, doing a whole bunch of fun stuff with a whole bunch of tools we gotta use, um, to try and figure out what we want to move forward with and purchase through the township for this, uh, rescue engine. Along with the tools, which is what this main PowerPoint is, in the budget also is purchasing of the fire hose. The truck doesn't just put out, or it doesn't just do vehicle rescues, right? It also has to go to fires. So the hose is kind of important for the, for the fire aspect. Um, and that would be a replacement of all the fire hoses that's, would be going on the truck. So the truck would be equipped with a brand new, brand new hose, which I don't think you have too much in the detail about that, uh, more so along with the, with the rescue tools. If I have control of the slides here, uh, okay, you can, you can scroll to the next slide. So currently, uh, we have a picture of what we have now, our current equipment. Currently hydraulic with a five thousand PSI of working pressure, which was great twenty years ago when these tools were new. Obviously cars are a lot newer nowadays, metal's stronger, there's more metal. So the five thousand PSI isn't really, you know, pun, not pun intended, cutting it anymore. All the new tools are moving towards the, the ten thousand PSI of, of working force. With this hydraulic tools, it's attached to a hydraulic hose, which is only like a hundred feet long. So depending on where the person, you know, crashes into their car, whether it's off the road, we can only be so close to the vehicle, or so far away, I should say, for we to start figuring out other ideas. Nowadays, with the new electric tools that we're trying to go to, um, it doesn't matter where the truck is, it doesn't matter where the car is, we can, we can access the vehicle anywhere. Uh, in the picture, the tool on the left is our spreader, uh, more known as the jaws of life. That's what we use to actually, you know, spread the corridors and metal. And then next to it is the cutter, which we'll use to actually cut the car and remove the car from the patient, which is how we do extracations. We don't remove the patient from the car, we remove the car from the patient to get to them. Having only one of each is, has worked, I mean, we make it work, right? But we've seen the downfalls of it over the years of running extracations every year, numerous times every year. It's excellent for me. Airbags, I don't have a picture of them on here right now because currently are the airbags we have, they're expired. They have a ten year shelf life. Or the rubber is no longer rated for the working load. So currently, we don't have airbags. Airbags are used for lifting vehicles, moving vehicles, lifting machinery. Anything that needs to be moved, these airbags can move a ton of weight, up to like thirty tons is what we're looking at. So it can, it can move some, some serious weight. We don't have that capabilities currently, as of today. When we had them, uh, we had three, we had three airbags, one of each different size, which again, kind of limited us with what we can do as far as what airbags fit in what spot and what situation, uh, calls for. So the times where we could have benefited from having airbags, potentially, the ones we had didn't fit the situation properly. You can scroll to the next one. Struts. This is a picture of what we currently use. Uh, struts, before we remove someone from a vehicle and start cutting, we need to stabilize the car, alright? If the car is upside down, on its side, teetering on an edge of an embankment or whatever, we need to make sure you're safe in the vehicle before we try to get you out. We use these struts to, to do that, right? To stabilize the vehicle or multiple vehicles, depending what the situation is. These struts, again, are, you know, I guess older technology, I could say. You can see on the picture of the handle, that's actually kind of like a trailer jack type mechanism of doing this. It works, it's not the greatest. These ones in particular are, they're cumbersome, they're, they're a pain to use. Um, and for, for members that aren't using it constantly, now that three o'clock rollover is not the ideal time to relearn how to, how to put this tool together and, and use it on the vehicle. So it's not, not super, super user friendly. Uh, we only have two of these located on the side of the rescue truck currently, which can stabilize one vehicle, um, efficiently. So if we have multiple vehicles, that's kind of where we've seen our, our deficits because just the, the lack of our equipment cache is just not, not there to, able to stabilize a, a significant incident. So we're gonna rely on mutual aid, which is just delaying the extrication of the patient or patients in the vehicles. This is the extrication tools, the rescue tools. Uh, like I said, over the past six, seven months, we've had plenty of, plenty of the big name dealers come out. And our members have used all the electric tools, just to figure out what is best for us and the township and the incidents we run to. It was kind of a unanimous decision as far as the Homacho brand of tools, just as far as ergonomics, you know, easy to use, they're, they're fast, they're much faster than what we currently have. Um, cutting and spreading are faster, they're stronger. Um, these are ten thousand PSI rated, so they can handle all the new car, you know, all the new car ratings for the extra metal they put in for the safety ratings, spreading and cutting, it can handle all those things. If you guys are, you can, you can keep on the, the slide up. Yeah. The picture we had of the, our current squad, we have one cutter and one spreader. We're looking, uh, hopefully, to move to two cutters and two spreaders or two jaws of life, I should say. Uh, the, the main reason for this, uh, doubling our tool cache is in our big extracations we've had throughout the years, we try to have a hot wash afterwards of, you know, what went wrong, what went well, what can we do to improve on the next one? And every single time, it's always, this could have been faster if we, if we had a second cutter, or if we had a second spreader. Because now with only one and one, I need to wait for my partner to finish what he's doing, or I can work on one side of the car. Having two of each, I mean, it cuts the efficiency down in half. Uh, the big, I don't want to get too into the weeds, could like to talk about this for hours. Um, in the vehicle rescue world, it's called the, it's called the golden hour. Basically, it's sixty minutes from time the person crashes their car to the time that they're on the operating table. That's the, it's the golden hour. We want to stay within that. Some things we can't, we can, uh, control, like how long it takes for the ambulance to get to the hospital. Um, there's obviously time from when they crash the car to their found and calling nine one one. That's all, that's all eating away time uh, it, within that one hour. What we can help and change is when we get on scene and how quickly and efficiently we can remove that patient from the vehicle. Having two cutters and two spreaders in reality reduces our time by, you know, in half because we have twice as much tools to, to get that person out of the vehicle just that much quicker. That's why on the list, it's, it's two, two cutters and two spreaders. There is rams on there, uh, telescoping rams. Those are basically just giant pistons that we can put on either side of the vehicle to push a dash. Basically what happens if you're in an accident, in a front end collision, your dash can kind of roll down and almost pin you to your seat. The only way to get you out is to, to lift the dash. And having two of the same size or close to the same size rams is the quickest way of doing that. That's, that's what the rams are for. And like a battery powered, they're easier, they're quicker, easy to move around. It doesn't matter if you're, you know, down in a ravine off Bishop Hollow, or you're in the woods three hundred yards. There's, there's nothing that's limiting us to this. All the tools come with extra batteries. So there's, in the beginning, there was a question on battery life. Like I said, we've cut a, when we were demoing these tools, we cut a lot of cars and batteries actually lasted a super long time, which impressed all of us with their performance, which was fantastic. Uh, this is a picture of the airbags that we were talking about. You'll notice the name brand of Homacho. It just so happened that all the members liked the products from Homacho. And then it was also a benefit of going everything Homacho in the end because we were able to get a, a pretty significant deal by getting a package of everything from the same manufacturer. Uh, we will save the township almost thirty to forty thousand dollars by, by getting a package deal versus going to different manufacturers for each, for each, uh, piece of equipment. Uh, the airbags, the quantities are listed here. Um, what you see on the screen is the lifting bags. These are the four of these. Automatically more than we've had previously. This allows us now to equally lift a vehicle or an object off someone that is stuck, or to get off a vehicle to remove a vehicle. We can get crazy in the, in the vehicle rescue world. It's, we can talk for hours of potential things that have happened and could potentially happen. But basically, like I said, it's, it's more than double of the airbags, increasing our cash, in- increasing our capabilities for rescues that these have, these could have been used on, but we just didn't have them. So it's not a, you know, a what-if situation. These are, we've had situations where these would have been used if we had the equipment. We just, we just didn't have it at the time. But that's the airbags. And the struts. It's the Omni Shore brand. Um, these are kind of a new product on the market. Top bullet you guys can see, I did forget to mention in our other ones, that our current struts we have are rated for four thousand pounds in the perfect, perfect configuration, perfect scenario, with the sun at the right angle on a good day. Four thousand pounds. These new ones, you can see it's fifty thousand pounds. So even when we have dump trucks that roll over, which we've had that occur, these struts allow us to stabilize larger vehicles. Just having that buffer of weight rating, it, it takes away the worry of, is this car gonna be okay stabilized? Are these struts gonna secure the vehicle or not? It kind of removes that aspect. They're user friendly, like I said, uh, our current struts, they're a pain. Even if I go back to the firehouse after this, I might have to take a quick thirty seconds to kind of get a, a re, a mental refresh on how to, on how to set these things up. These struts are super easy. You take them out, you put the plate on the bottom, and then you put it against the car. It's gonna be great for three o'clock in the morning. Some of our members that aren't super, super active, but, you know, hey, they show up for that one wreck in the middle of the night, not all people around. They, this, it's a pretty self-explanatory uh, piece of equipment that anybody can, anybody can use and stabilize a vehicle much faster. Wind stabilization on why speed matters is we can't start cutting the car or removing the patient until the vehicle is stabilized.
Uh, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but, um, all these are related to, um, car, right? These are, um, this is, is this what we're looking at for our, um, for the, for their, I'm, I'm new on the, um,
Yeah.
running the meeting. So I just have a question on, on procedure here. This is what we're talking about for the equipment, Stephen, is that right?
Yeah, this is the equipment that would be placed on the rescue truck that we purchased.
Okay.
Earlier this year, the idea, um, part of the issue is that the truck does no longer comes with the hydraulics. So some of the equipment that we've had on the truck in the past, the, the jaws of life and those things are no longer able. And it's one of the, it's one of the items you're gonna be acting on later.
Yeah.
Twelve fours.
Yeah, I just wanted to be.
I'm sorry.
That we're talking about that on the agenda.
Yeah, you're talking about what's on the agenda tonight. Yes.
So, sorry, I just wanted to be sure what, that we were talking about this. And it's basically for rescues, right?
Right, yeah. Yeah, anything, vehicle, equipment.
Uh huh.
Any type of, these struts can be used if a car crashes into a house and the house is unstable.
Okay.
Right? They, they, it has the capabilities of stabilizing a house or a building, um, which we didn't have before.
Right.
The CVS has been hit numerous times.
Yeah, that seems like a target, doesn't it?
It's like a target building we have for some reason. I don't know why the CVS wants to get hit.
Yeah.
Um, but these can, you know, secure a, a wall there.
Okay.
So it's, it's, yeah, the functions are.
So this is all new upgrade, um, clearly upgraded material, uh, upgraded equipment.
Yeah.
It's just putting new equipment on the truck that's.
Yeah, and it's, it sounds as though it's light years ahead of what you've got now, so.
But yeah, like I said, most of our, our jaws of life and our cutters is well over twenty years old.
Yeah.
So.
Okay.
It's, it's, it's due for replacement.
Yeah, okay. And that's this number that we're looking at, right, Stephen? And it's, um.
Yes.
Okay, that's what's all included, okay.
Yeah, and then the number, like it said, is the rescue tools and then the fire hose. I didn't get too crazy into the fire hose just because it's kind of have an idea of what the fire hose is, right?
Yeah.
It's fire hose. Um, main thing is the expensive part is the rescue tools.
Yes, okay.
Yeah.
Stephen, do you know how long it takes? Like, obviously you have to order these. Um, how, do you know how long it takes to get them once you order them?
So the, as far as ordering goes, the fire hose is the ordering problem we would have, I could say. Not problem, but the supply line, which we use to hook from the hydrant to the fire engine, that's a twelve monthly time. So we would be ordered now and then it would show up when the truck gets here. All this rescue stuff is in stock. So it can be postponed until the truck gets here. Preferably a little earlier, that way it can be used and trained on, as everyone is familiar. Um, but yeah, there's not a huge wait time on the, the rescue tool stuff. The hose is the only thing that has a, a larger lead time. That would be the more urgent purchase compared to the, to the rescue tools.
But you'd be able to use the rescue tools now.
Oh, yeah, for sure. Yeah, I mean, if we, if it was purchased today, then we're, they're, they're going on.
Yeah.
For sure. We are using them one hundred percent.
I don't blame you.
We'll make it work. Yeah. But yeah, that's, that's the only, the delay is the supply line.
Right, okay. All right, well, thank you. Do you, anybody have any other questions?
That's it?
All right, great. Thanks so much, we appreciate it.
Of course, absolutely. Thank you.
Um, and as far as presentations, uh, eight point two budget presentation. Mr. Neese, Mr.?
So, uh, I know we're a little late this year, but I wanted to get before you tonight, uh, where we are on the budget. Uh, at least the proposed budget for, uh, this next year. Um, it's, uh, been a difficult task to be truthful. Um, but I want to walk through real quick with you kind of where we are and what we've done. Obviously, anytime we put the budget, and I have twenty-six on here, but it's actually, or twenty-five on here, it's actually twenty-six is budget. I'm still in this year. Um, but anyway, uh, twenty-six is budget. Uh, we've taken into the thought process of, uh, uh, the, the strategic plan and the comp plan, uh, what our focus is, and so that's part of it. Uh, we've also, when I'm doing the overview that you're gonna see. Uh, we've also, when I'm doing the overview that you're gonna see, the, kind of the slides in the beginning. I'm talking about things that are a thousand dollars and more. Uh, if it's less than a thousand dollars, I haven't spent any time on that with, you don't want to hear every. If you want to hear every detail, I'm happy to spend that, but I'm gonna take long enough of your time tonight just doing the thousand dollars and more stuff. Uh, but that's where, where our focus is. Uh, right now, our projected revenues for next year. Are eleven million nine oh one, which is actually a decrease of two hundred and four thousand from this year. Uh, and I'll talk about where that kind of comes in. Um, but most of that is related, uh, to, uh. A part of that's related to the interest going down. There's about fifty thousand dollars there. There's also some, uh. Pullback, uh, in a couple other areas, uh, related to, uh, monies that we're getting. Uh, in both LST tax and, uh, transfer tax, there's a little bit of pullback in those areas. Uh, so, uh, we're looking at that. Expenses are up about eight hundred and fifty-four thousand. I'm gonna go through why that's the case. Uh, this budget also recommends using, uh, sixty-five thousand of fund balance next year. Uh, the sixty-five thousand's related to five thousand for the planned deer hunt, uh, that we're trying to get set up for twenty twenty-six. And then, uh, the additional sixty thousand to continue the comp plan, uh, that we're working on. And the reason for that is those are things that don't come about every year. Uh, so that's the reason to use fund balance, uh, in the process. Uh, current, our current millage rate is one point nine seven seven, seven? I think I said enough sevens. Um, and our current assessment is three billion seven hundred thirty-one thousand. Uh, eight twenty-six. It's about six percent of the total counties, uh. Millage countywide. Um, so it's a, it's a hefty amount. Um, there is an increase in revenues for some third-party pieces. Um, of about a hundred and seventy-six thousand. Um, and then, like I said, the operating. Uh, like we talked about, is up eight hundred and fifty-four thousand, the expenses. And my thing is not wanting to move forward. There we go. Personnel wise, uh, probably the biggest cost increase individually, uh, we did put back in for next year, the custodial person. Uh, this continues to be in need. Uh, not only, uh, the, the building just needs to be cleaned on a regular basis. And we've, our public work staff does it, but every time they do. If, they literally send six guys in here and they're about two hours in the morning. And, you know, uh, an hour to two hours in the morning to go through and blow through the building. And when they do that, that means they're not out on the street taking care of things that they really need to be doing out there. And so, um, it's anywhere from. Six to eight hours, or I mean, six to twelve hours that they spend in the building, uh, a day. And so that's time they're not out on the street, uh, that would be helpful. Um, the, uh. The budget includes contractual increases for the police. Uh, that's what we passed last year. That's in there. And it also has an estimated wage and benefit increase for all the employees in all the departments that are non-related to the uniform police. Uh, we did have a seven point four percent increase in health insurance this year. Um, and, uh. That has kind of been one of those areas we just don't have a lot of control of right at this moment. Um, we can take a look, uh, maybe in the future. But right now, that's where we are with that. Uh, legislative, um, has two, has, uh. Two increases, one for the proposed deer hunt that I talked about. And then a thousand dollars, uh, of additional training, uh, for the supervisors. Uh, related to one, maybe attending PSATs as well as emergency management training. Um, under the administration cost, uh, we actually have a reduction. Uh, one of the few reductions, uh, we've found that we can purchase paper. Uh, Desiree's found a way to purchase paper by purchasing it as a whole, uh, pallet at a time. Versus purchasing it as individual box, boxes. So if we purchase the whole pallet, we actually. Save about a thousand dollars a year just on paper alone. And then we've also, she's also found some savings in the office supplies by purchasing them a little differently than we have in the past. Um, anticipated increase, we anticipate an increase of about three thousand dollars for the audit next year. Uh, based on what the auditors were talking about, uh, under IT, I'm sorry, under tax collection, just minor increases. Uh, most of these are just a, a few, uh, areas where, you know, increase in postage, those kind of things. Uh, has, has taken it up of eleven hundred dollars. Uh, legal services, uh, is about seven thousand dollars. Uh, then so that's actually based on the amount of usage as well as expected increase, uh, in proposed fees next year. IT communications, uh, there's some cybersecurity features that we need to add to our system, uh, that's important. And that's about sixteen thousand five hundred. Facilities, uh, I told you about the custodial position, that, that's about ninety-eight thousand, a little bit more than that. Uh, the utilities, that's supposed to be twenty-five thousand, not twenty-five dollars, it's twenty-five thousand, uh, in, uh. And that's based on the kilowatt per hour. Uh, we went from point zero five one six, uh, to. Sorry, my screen, uh, point zero eight six five, which is actually like a sixty-seven percent increase. Uh, so, uh, and that's through a bid process that we did, uh, using the state. And, uh, that's still, that still was that expensive, so, uh, that's. When that hits all of our different places that we have electricity, it adds up pretty quick. So, uh, that's why the twenty-five thousand there. Under police, the areas that are most in, the biggest impact, uh, that we anticipate about forty-five hundred. Between liability and vehicle insurance as an increase. Uh, new hire costs, where we have a officer retiring next year, and we have to go out and do the new hire. Uh, between uniforms and the cost of actually doing the testing and things like that. It's about eight thousand dollars. We've been using one of our officers to do accreditation. Uh, that officer has told us that he is. Unable to continue, continue to maintain doing that, um, with some family changes at home. Uh, so in order for us to can stay accredited and we've gone to a third party, it'll cost us seventeen thousand. I anticipate actually, we'll potentially maybe see a little bit of savings in overtime, because their overtime, I didn't budget more for overtime. But their over, overtime was a little bit higher, um, than it had been in the past. And I think that's partly related to this. It won't be a dollar for dollar, but it'll be some savings there. Um, there's some, there's a computer program upgrade that they need to do that's ten thousand. And then we put the, uh, police cars back in the budget. Um, and this is assuming that both of them would be marked cars. Uh, in that way. Uh, fire department, uh, the fire relief fund, uh, has projected a seventeen thousand dollar increase. And that's just based on what we got this year. And we anticipate an increase of seven, or sixty-five, almost sixty-six, uh, thousand, or sixty-six hundred dollars. In vehicle insurance, um, on those. The codes department, uh, we've, did increase for third-party inspections. And, uh, we increased for a thousand for training and then also for code books. Uh, it is on your agenda tonight. If you pass it tonight, I could probably take this out, uh, this thousand dollars. Um, but that, that's what that's for. Um, planning and zoning, uh, the, we've looked at that, we, we talked about that sixty thousand dollars. For the planning consultant for the, uh, strategic and comp plan. Uh, there's also an increase for the zoning, so it's sort of just the amount of time that they're here, uh, in that, uh, increase zones. Uh, uh, for emergency management, for large events. There's some things we just need to get them in order to be prepared for large events, activities that we're having. Uh, and that cost is about five thousand. Maybe a little less, but that's what we're looking at. Uh, recycling, uh, the leaf contract. We're anticipating may go up about nine thousand. And then the recycling contract itself, we know goes up eighteen. Uh, snow removal, we added some extra salt back in. Uh, we had taken it out last year. We ended up using it, going back. And so we put that back in the budget. Um, increase related to, uh, control signals. Uh, we, we need to do some line painting at our intersections. Uh, and that's the thermo, thermoplast that they put down and it lasts longer. So, uh, we, that, uh, George is. Told me we need to do next year. Uh, maintenance, um, we continue to have maintenance issues. And we have the ongoing, uh, engineering costs related to those issues, getting the engineer out and helping us take a look. Uh, what we need to do and the same thing with storm water. Uh, and so that's just covering those costs. Uh, the, uh, increase under historic and commissions and society is related to the square tavern. Uh, there's fifteen thousand there. Um, the, they've asked us, uh, to consider taking on all the costs of the paper mill house. Uh, that's not built into this. There's a little bit of extra room in the budget, but not for the total amount if we were to do that. Um, and I'm looking to see exactly what that price would be. Uh, and then parks, uh, the contracted maintenance. Um, and that's related to lawn mowing and things like, and that kind of stuff. Um, debt service, uh, I think I shared with you last year, I don't know if you remember, uh, but we looked at eighty. Uh, thousand dollar increase this year. Uh, the good news, uh, of all the increases I just shared with you. The good news is actually a two hundred and twenty-three thousand dollar decrease in pensions. Uh, and a five hundred, five thousand two hundred dollar increase in insurance projected. The next two page, or next three pages actually kind of go in based on the source of revenue. And then the, uh, the, um, the expenses, uh, and that it's by department. I would make kind of note, um, just kind of where we are. Uh, it, it, if you look at. Uh, revenue, budget to projection, um, for, for this year. We actually budgeted really pretty close. There's about, let's say thirty thousand dollars difference. That's pretty close in budgeting. When you're looking at twelve million dollars. Um, and so that's kind of where we think we are gonna be in that. Uh, and that looks compared to twenty-four. Uh, but if you look at twenty twenty-two, or twenty, I'm sorry. Twenty twenty-six, whatever year we're going into next, uh, we are projecting a slight decline, um, for the following year. And as I said, part of that's under, um. Uh, uh, interest, uh, just because we're seeing the banks pull back and what they're offering on the interest. And, uh, there's also a, uh, that, uh, there's one other area and I just lost it. Oh, uh, service for charges, uh, charges for services. And that's related, uh, to our land development. That, that's been pulling back a little bit. And so that's what we're watching. If you look at what we had this year versus what we had. What we had, uh, in where we are. So, uh, under expenses. I'm not gonna go back through all that, because I just kind of took you through that in pretty much detail. I would just bring you down to the last page. Uh, on that, the totals, uh, and, uh, I, this next page kind of shows it a little better if we look at where our fund balance was. We were about seven million when we started the year. Uh, we anticipate being at about seven million to end of the year. Uh, we're really looking at about a three, three thousand dollar change, not a lot of change, uh, in that. Um, and then potentially for next year, where we have that gap that I've been talking about. And how we handle that gap is what we need to look at. Um, so that would potentially take us down to there, uh, at that six million. Um, under streetlight fund, I'm gonna go through these pretty quickly. Uh, I would bring your attention to the last column. Uh, the, where those, that's the budgeted column. Uh, in most of the cases, we've stayed pretty consistent and pretty close. Uh, to what we've had in prior years on revenue. Uh, I don't see changing anything there for the moment. Uh, and if we don't, the, here's the expenses that we anticipate, uh, going across. Um, and, uh, the final, uh, that I would say is if you look at that. Uh, our expenses is, are actually greater, uh, than our, than our revenues. But we knew that. We had actually planned for a couple years, uh, on the streetlight to actually try to reduce. Some of what we had in the fund balance for streetlights, because you only can spend it for that. Uh, we know we do have, in the future, we're gonna have to replace, um, our streetlights, uh, in about eight or nine years. And so we don't want to take it totally down, but we didn't want that keep growing quite so much, uh, in that way. And there is some of that money that gets put back in for that growth period, uh, to, for to replace those streetlights. Um, so we do have some of that. That, but there's a eleven thousand that gets added to that. Um, the, under the hydrant fund, it's kind of a similar thing. It's, we're looking at nine. Uh, ninety-nine thousand in our revenues, ninety-eight thousand in our expenses, and it actually helps that to go up a little bit. Uh, this is one that we probably don't need to. We, we could make a little bit of a change. I would say, I, I don't want to get too much less than what it cost us for a year, um, but we could be a little bit less here. We could get down closer to about fifty percent, um, over time. And this is going up a little. I think we could probably save a little bit of money here, or have a little bit of an adjustment. I'm sorry, a millage. Doesn't impact everybody in the community, just impacts those who have fire hydrant tax as part of their piece. Uh, under the ARPA funds, uh, I'm projecting zero, uh, earnings next year, because we should be all spent out by the end of the year. Um, and if you look at that, that's what it shows. Uh, we've, we've had projects and we've spent the seven hundred, or seven hundred thousand, almost eight hundred thousand dollars. Um, and by the way, we spent all that money on storm wa- water projects. If you remember, you as a board made that decision. And I would just say that's a really wise decision, uh, because that's not money we're getting again. That was one-time money, and we've been able to do some really good stormwater projects that have made a real difference. In Upper St. Albans over behind, uh, the Green Country area, we were able to do a project. We were able to do a couple other projects as well. I think we did one on Hansel, one on, uh, huh? Martins, uh, and Valley Forge. So we, we were able to use that and spread that over a variety of projects. It made significant impact and difference. And so that's been good.
And the, I think the larger impact was up behind, um, Culbertson in the Upper San.
Yeah, then the, that was a huge, that was a huge project.
That was, they were in the, built in the seventies and they were now with storm inlets.
Yeah.
So we installed all these new storm inlets. And I think, I, I know that, um, Eric and Stephen and Leonard had received, um. Great reviews from everyone during these storms that we've had. So it worked, so.
It did work very well. Um, it was, I think it was a really good investment of those dollars. Um, the six, two thousand sixteen note, that was the, the, that was, um. The refinance of the two thousand twelve dollars for this building. Um, we're, we're going to, we put the roof on, we just haven't taken that money from here. Uh, and then we also had some, uh, monies. So that's there, that'll be at zero. Uh, we also had some monies left in the bonds. And the bond was what we went out for when we did this building for the renovations. Um, so we are also applying that towards the roof to bring that cost down. If you remember, that was, uh, you know, uh, I think it was what, seven hundred thousand? Or something like that. So that's where those are being applied to. We just haven't, you're gonna be writing that check next month and, or not next month. The next meeting at the end of the month. Uh, so that's where that's gonna be. The war on drugs, this is money that we, I, we used to get money. Pretty actively, um, uh, for, uh. When we were doing drug things, but the county has kind of changed. When we were doing drug bust, there was, they would give us money back to help us keep doing. That, the county's kind of changed that program now. Uh, they don't necessarily give us much of the money back that they've collected during those busts. Um, so we're, uh, we're spending it down slowly. Uh, but most of the time, that money is spent on, um. When we need to supplement, when we buy new, uh, office, when we buy officers' replacement, um. Protective vest, uh, for them, uh, bulletproof vest. Uh, so that's how we spend that money, uh, to protect them. Uh, in what they're doing. And so you can kind of see where we are. If, if, if we buy, purchase them next year, which we think we will. We'll be down to about, uh, twenty thousand in that account. Uh, the other thing we get is police donations. Uh, right now, they don't have a lot that they're doing with that, but there, there's about fifty-five thousand at the end of next year. Uh, based on what we think is gonna happen there. Um, open space, uh, we have some monies that have come in. Uh, here recently, uh, this year, and we had some monies. And so we're anticipating spending that money. Uh, towards the project at Greer, uh, Park. Uh, that project is probably gonna be over a million for sure. Um, and so this will help offset that project. Uh, and we might have a few other dollars that come in between now and the end of the year on that one. Or between now and the time that project happens at least, uh, that would it be applied to that. Under the capital fund, um, our, in, our anticipated revenues are related to interest. Uh, potentially some grant monies that we have out there. Uh, and there's not a whole lot else right now, anticipated revenues. Uh, some of the expenses, uh, this two hundred thousand under legislative is related to, uh, the monies we've been setting aside. Uh, for, uh, doing, um. We want to get all of our documents scanned and digitized. Uh, so that we are not having to go find hard copies that are in the other building. Um, and then the new, this year would be the additional sixty thousand. I think that would. I think that would probably give us about what we need to get that project done, or at least put a really good dent in it and get that done. And will really help us. It also, if we do it right, it can help us reduce some of the documents that we're having to store today. And we would take care of that. IT, there was thirty-two fifty that was related to an upgrade that we were going to do this year. That upgrade got put on hold, and that's going to go back to next year. It's just an equipment upgrade. It's one of the switches. The facilities, the, the most here that we're looking at for facilities and the facility upgrades that I recall, there's about fifty-plus thousand dollars. That's the, the library patio out front that's starting to sink a little bit. We've got to address that. There's some stormwater issues underneath of it that have to be addressed. There's also a replacement of signs, the, the front sign out front. I don't know if you've seen our township sign. It's looking pretty sad these days, but it's, there's about seven thousand dollars in there for that. There's also a nineteen, I think, actually I moved it down under the ambulance area. There's twenty-five thousand dollars down below under ambulance. That's to cover the there's in order for our ambulance to be more responsive and to have some of the drugs that it needs to have on it. It needs to be in a temperature-controlled area when it's parked and not out. Because right now, when they want to control the drug temperature, some of the drugs that they use for a patient have to either be cold or be warm. And in order to do that, they've actually have the ambulance doing, having to run all the time in order to keep it that way. Or they have to keep it inside the trailer. Some of that, they're just not able to even have on the ambulance because they're not able to guarantee the control of the temperature. They have told us if we would climate control that area, it would allow us to better serve our residents when there's emergencies, particularly for things related to heart issues and things like that. There's some medicines they can do that are, have to be at a very specific cold temperature in order to do that. Under the police area, the, most of that increase is related to the, the, the two cars that we talked about earlier. And also, the I just went blank. Oh, the, the camera trailer, not camera trailer, the camera on the the license plate readers on a couple of the pieces. If we do it the first year, if you go here and under this area to get it started, we would then have to add into the budget next year for that. And then the fire, I maintained a hundred thousand in there. I, I don't know the exact number they need to do their hose tower, but they had requested that money actually five years ago. And it's maintained in the budget for them. The recycle is the ten thousand dollars George was going to get totes. I don't think he's ordered those this year, so we've left that. Public Works, there's a variety of projects related to Public Works. Most of these are related to projects around the, the campus area that we have. I'm drawing a blank on public works. Tom's going to go and grab the detailed paperwork there. I'm going to jump down to traffic while we're doing that. Traffic was, the traffic pieces, the three hundred was related to the green light go. The eighteen hundred is related to or I'm sorry, eighteen hundred, eighteen thousand, I apologize, is related to the project that is some crosswalk, minor improvements with painting in that way, as some additions there. The stormwater projects, that's just dollars that we know, we, we keep having these projects come up. So we need to set some dollars aside to be prepared for small projects like that. My guess is if Eric and I talk, we could probably come up with ten or fifteen times that amount, but the ones that come up every year that we have to do something about and get through, that's what we're looking at with that. The roads and sidewalks and bridges, that's our sidewalk project that we have planned. That's where most of that revenue's offsetting that I talked about earlier. Under the active recreation, this here is the playground at Greer Park. We have set aside some dollars for that in the past. This would be that, and it would also be replacement of basketball goals at, out here at Gable Park. When we replaced the court and did all the work, we did not replace the, the goals. And the glass on the goals has actually started to, not only just scratch, but we're, we're seeing that it's starting to have some change in the way it's responding. We just want to make sure we get that taken care of before it becomes any issues. And then find, also, whoops. Go back here, sorry. We have the historic properties, most of the historic properties pieces, there's about two hundred. I think I put in two hundred sixty-five thousand is related to paper mill house, related to windows and doors, and also dealing with cracks in the mortar and the stucco. There is a list of things at the Square Tavern that include the air conditioning of the Square Tavern, the roof at the Square Tavern is, has some areas where they're seeing daylight. And so there knows some work there. There's some plumbing issues that need to be addressed as well as some tree work. And so that's all of those areas. Under the parks area, the, oh, and the other thing. No, that's, that's that area. The other, the other areas that we're looking at with some work that need to be done in parks, we have the walking bridge at Drexel Lodge. They were supposed to do that this year. We've moved that to next year. And there is other project. Let me real quick. I'm sorry, that's it for the, for the parks project. And then, so that's our total is that three million that we think we're going to spend next year. If we look at those numbers, we have eight million right now. We're anticipating spending about three and a half million this year. We'll spend three million next year, which will take us down to about two million, which is really as low as we would want to go in the, in that, if we did all of those projects. But those are projects that are out there that we're looking at. The last couple of areas, liquid fuels, that money has been used the last several years to pay down the debt that we took out for the twenty twenty road program. That was, this year was our last year on the payments on that, so that money will be able to be put into road program again next year. And that's, and it says debt, it's not debt next year. That would actually be if we did a road program, taking some monies that we have this year. We have about five hundred thousand to do that. But that would show you what would be left in the project area if we did that with liquid fuels. Stormwater, that's the, where we do the inspections of the stormwater on people's properties when they do upgrades. And if we look at the end, there'll be about three hundred and twenty-eight thousand in there. So that's the budget as it's paired right now. I'm more than happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions from the board? All right, Stephen, thank you. Now move down to section nine, reports, nine point one report from the township engineer, Mr. Johnson.
Good evening. Nothing too dramatic. He was going through all the capital projects that we have been wrapping up and they're working on for this coming year. A few of them are later on the agenda.
Nine point two, report to the town to manager, Mr. Nice.
The only thing that
That was a tough act to follow her, but you did well. I'll tell you that right there.
I'm going to, I'm going to try to be almost as brief, not quite. The, the only thing I would say is that we are obviously out collecting leaves. I, I would like to remind residents that leaves are not to be placed in the street. It's causing problems with our inlets, particularly when we have rains like last night. Please, 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 please keep your leaves on your regard. We will be getting around to pick them up. Because if you put them right at the curb, we are, that's how we can get around and collect them and do best.
But bigger than just the, the stormwater inlets, it's also the fact that some of these roads, people are making it almost impossible for cars to safely traverse on the, on the car path.
It is.
And the leaves make, the wet leaves make it slippery. I've seen cars kind of
It's, it's like, almost like ice if you're hitting wet leaves.
And I know that we have made it a point in every publication to highlight the fact that the leaves need to be on people's property and not on the individual trees. So I think maybe potentially a conversation needs to start occurring with the township staff on some recommendations that you guys can break to the board on how we can, you know, I don't want to say enforce that, but to make that even more noticeable or a gentle reminder to people.
We, we have lots of ideas.
All right, any questions for the township manager? Well, now move down to section ten, payments, ten point one. Can I get a motion approving the following township escrow account release that has been approved by our third-party professionals for completed work? Episcopal Academy escrow number eight one. Actually, I'm going to do both these together. So it's going to be eight point, excuse me, ten point one and ten point two, since they're both for Episcopal Academy. So the first one will be escrow number eight one dash two five one dash two two zero two nine for three hundred and fifty-one dollars and fifty cents. The other one will be Episcopal Academy escrow number eight one dash two five one dash two two zero one eight for a hundred and four dollars and seventy-five cents. Motion made by supervisor San Francisco, seconded by supervisor Chanlis. Is there any board discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed? Motion carries ten point three. Can I get a motion approving the contract change order number one for net increase of the contract totaling nine thousand four hundred and sixty-five dollars and fifty-four cents for Joseph J. Danielle LLC associated with the Hansel Road, Martins Run and Valley Forge Road Stormwater Improvements Project as approved by the township engineer?
So moved.
Motion is made by supervisor Chanlis, seconded by supervisor Russo. Is there any board discussion? Mr. Johnson, do you just want to talk about these increases real quick, briefly, all four of them, remaining four, ten three, ten six?
Correct. So it's first, ten three and ten four is the contract change order, final payment for that stormwater project. Basically, the change order came down to, we did some additional modification of the road to help deal with some of the ponding on the north end of that, the stone bridge there. It's actually shedding more water away from the bridge and ultimately protecting it. And then the second one is for the, the final payment of that project. And the ten point five and ten point six, that's the roads program. And that's just the rectifying, the final contract came in four hundred and seventy-four dollars off of the budget amount.
Perfect. You guys did pretty well on that. That was ten point three. There was a motion made and seconded. We'll count the board discussion for the next four, and we'll just take them individually. So all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries ten point four. Can I get a motion approving the certificate for payment request final totaling seventeen thousand, seven hundred and twenty-seven dollars and forty-four cents for Joseph J. Danielle LLC associated with the Hansel Road, Martins Run, excuse me, Martins Road and Valley Forge Road Stormwater Improvements Project as approved by the township engineer, leaving a retainage balance of zero dollars. Motion is made by supervisor Chanlis, seconded by supervisor Roberts-Lycap. Is there any board discussion? All is in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries ten point five. Can I get a motion to approve the contract change order number one for net increase of the contract totaling four hundred and seventy-five, four hundred and seventy-four dollars and twenty-eight cents for Alan Myers LP associated with the twenty twenty-five road program as approved by the township engineer? Motion is made by supervisor Chanlis, seconded by supervisor San Francisco. Is there any board discussion? All is in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries ten point six. Can I get a motion approving the certificate for payment request number two final totaling twenty-one thousand, four hundred and twenty-nine dollars and sixty-three cents for Alan Myers LP associated with the twenty twenty-five road program as approved by the township engineer, leaving a retainage balance of zero?
Okay.
Motion is made by supervisor Chanlis, seconded by supervisor Roberts-Lycap. Is there any board discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries section eleven bills. I've reviewed the bills and I'll make a motion to approve the bills on check register dated November tenth, two thousand twenty-five totaling one hundred and eighty-five thousand, one hundred and seventy-one dollars and thirty-nine cents. Motion is made by the chair, seconded by supervisor San Francisco. Is there any board discussion? All is in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries eleven point two. Again, I've reviewed the bills and I'll make a motion ratifying the bills on EFT register dated November tenth, two thousand twenty-five totaling one thousand four hundred and fifty-seven dollars and fifty-one cents.
Second.
Motion is made by the chair, seconded by supervisor Roberts-Lycap. Is there any board discussion? All is in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carry section twelve, new business, twelve point one. Can we get a motion approving the advertisement for the appointment of Mally LP as a township auditor at the reorg meeting on January fifth, two thousand twenty-six?
So moved.
Motion is made by supervisor Russo, seconded by supervisor Chanlis. Mr. Nice, it's pretty self-explanatory, but is there anything you want to opine on this?
The, the only thing I would just say is that you're required to advertise at least thirty days in advance. We'll do it a little closer to that thirty days, but we wanted to make sure we had time to do it properly so you could vote on the fifth.
Perfect. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. We're going to skip twelve point two for real quick. We'll go down to twelve point three. Can I get a motion approving the township website and social media advertisement for all open boards, commissions, committee expiring positions?
So moved.
Motion is made by supervisor Chanlis, seconded by supervisor San Francisco. Is there any board discussion? All is in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries twelve point four. Can I get a motion approving the purchase of the equipment for the township fire truck at a cost not to exceed two hundred and fifty thousand dollars? Motion is made by supervisor San Francisco, seconded by supervisor Roberts-Lycap. Is there any board discussion? The only thing I'll say is Kevin, I watched the presentation. You did a good job.
Good job.
You're welcome. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries. And you can tell the fire company you did a good job because you just got two hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of equipment. You're welcome. You're welcome. Twelve point five. Can I get a motion authorizing the use of current year fund balance, purchase two police cars at a cost not to exceed seventy-five thousand dollars each?
Second.
Motion is made by supervisor San Francisco, seconded by supervisor Roberts-Lycap. Is there any board discussion? All is in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries twelve point six. Can I get a motion authorizing the use of current year fund balance, purchase a Ford F-350 with utility box, plow and slot box to the public works department at a cost not to exceed one hundred and ten thousand dollars?
Second.
Motion is made by supervisor Chanlis, seconded by supervisor Roberts-Lycap. Is there any board discussion? All is in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. All right, we'll jump back up to twelve point two. I am actually going to make a, a motion to table this. I believe that there's probably still more work that Steve and the township staff might want to do with regards to the budget. That's just my, I mean, my thought process is to table it in the presentation I heard and let Steve go back and, and do a little bit more work from a timeline perspective.
I'll second that.
Okay, from a timeline perspective, I think that, you know, we'll have the additional, the next meeting will have enough time to advertise and, and do what it is that we need to do. But that's just my thought, high level, so.
Yeah, I did, I just would disclose that doing that, we'll probably have to add in that fourth or second meeting of December, which is fine.
December twenty-second, correct?
Yep, December twenty-seventh.
So I would say, yeah, we can't do it on Tina's birthday. I would say if the, and I don't know if we can, Rich, I don't know if we can even, if I can even vote on this now, but I would say it's safe for the township to proceed with advertising for that on twenty-second. Just because we had advertised, we're having a meeting.
Yeah.
And I think it's safe to say that, because we're going to be tabling this, we're going to need to do that twenty-second.
Yeah.
So I guess we would have time to do it at the next meeting in November. Just put it on the agenda to have
Yeah, well, that's what we'll do. We'll put it on the next meeting.
All right, so I'll make a motion to table twelve point two. Seconded by supervisor Chanless, all those in favor? All is opposed, motion carries. All right, section thirteen, public hearing. We're going to do thirteen point one, Kathy Cavalier. It's going to be you first with the historic properties. We have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven of them. So I think all you need to do, Kathy, is do a few sentences on each. The board has been provided all the information, the entire application, supporting documentation and review letters from the county planning commission. I would say just hit high levels on all seven. If any board member has any specific questions on them, we'll take it all at the end when you're done going through all, all seven of these.
Where we start, just for the record.
Oh, I should note, sorry about that.
Advertised in the Delaware County Times on October twenty seventh and November third for this evening's hearing. We'll make that part of the record.
Perfect. And I will take, I will, I will note that it is eight twenty and we are, I apologize, on the record now for this hearing. The first thing I ask is since this is a hearing, if there's any members of the public that are here to oppose or to get party status for the properties. All right, Kathy, we'll let you take it away.
Okay, so the seven properties that are up for inclusion in our ordinance. Five of those are from the Historic Resource Survey done in nineteen eighty four by the county and with the help of the Pennsylvania Historic Preservation and Museum Commission and as well as funding from the Department of the Interior. So those five are, have the full descriptions and they're in your packet, so you can see those. And I'll start with those. The, the last two are not. They were added on by the commission and the homeowners. I'll also preface by saying that the owners all signed these applications. But I want to add to that, that that was initiated by the commission. So in order to get the properties and to get people to sign, it requires the commission actually going out and talking with each of these individual owners, because there's no other way to get there, to get them to file the applications. So yes, they signed them all, but it's also a co, a cooperative kind of interaction between the commission and the, and the owners. Starting with the five that are in the Historic Resource Inventory. Thirty five, twenty three, Goshen Roads, known as the Haysham House. Pretty familiar to most people across the street from Culbertson Elementary School, built in seventeen eighty five, named for the original owners. It has multiple, and I won't get into all of those architectural and unique features which remain today, random with floors, beams. They actually also put in addition onto the back of that home last year using period architecture and very closely copied the interior and exterior of the home. It's one of the oldest homes in Newtown. A part of it was built probably in the seven, early seventeen hundreds, but the majority was seventeen eighty five. Two eighteen, Second Avenue, known as the Courtney House. That, that home is alongside the Marble Newtown Senior High School in that neighborhood. We know it growing up as the avenues. But, and it's a beautifully maintained home built in eighteen forty seven. But an original portion of that was built in the late seventeen hundreds. Home to Joseph Courtney, served in the Civil War, raised his family here and was buried at Marple Presbyterian Church. And the next owner was William Neal. It also is home to one of Newtown's oldest, and I think the history book said a buttonwood tree, but I believe it's a London plane tree, which is in the front of it and well known to everybody in the area. And that was written about in the late eighteen hundreds, early nineteen hundreds when, when the woman who lived there was growing up. So the fact, current family is maintaining the home. Again, it has all the architectural features and I was inside that one as well. Random with floors, beams, and it's in very good condition. It has a, a plate on the front stating the date, eighteen forty seven. One fourteen dash one sixteen, North Newtown Street Road. It's actually the Friends Meeting House School. It was built in eighteen eighty five and you'll see it as you're, it sits right next to Friends Meeting. And it looks, it's a, a private residence at this point, but rented by the Friends of Newtown Township. It was built to replace an octagonal school that originally sat on that site and was built in the seven, late seventeen hundreds. The, it was the first day school for the historic Friends Meeting House. And as I pointed out, currently a private residence owned by Newtown Friends. Thirty eight, forty, Gradyville Road, known as the Philip Dunn House. Built in two sections, that's in seventeen forty three. And the later section having a date stowed in eighteen seventy. This home is one of the few that isn't seen from the street. It sits back off Gradyville Road on a long, long driveway on the, on the left side as you go down Gradyville between or up from Providence Road. Currently, the owner of the home is a descendant of Dr. Carson, who lived there in the early nineteen hundreds. And apparently he was a descendant of Joshua Humphries. American shipwright architect known as the father of the American Navy. And he built quite a few ships during the revolution. The Colonial English Farmhouse has a lot of, again, interior features that have been maintained. It was built on a hundred acres that was purchased by Philip Dunn in seventeen forty three. It is now, and at that time was farmland, it is now part, sits right near the reservoir. And is I believe either side of it is currently in the process of being developed. Thirty eight, sixty five, Gradyville Road. It's the John Grimm House. Built in seventeen thirty five, stone and clay. Grimm family lived there on this home, which included one hundred and forty eight acres of farmland for several generations. Most people who grew up here are familiar with Alice and Myrtle Grimm, who were teachers. They attended our local schools, college at Westchester, returned, taught in Newtown. Alice became principal of Newtown's Public Elementary, which is now known as Stafford's Friends School, but it was known as Alice Grimm Elementary School after nineteen fifty. This home is beautifully maintained by the owners, many original architectural features. I am part of Newtown's historic, I call it Gradyville roadway. The next two are add, added on and requested by the owners. Two hundred Media Line Road, built in nineteen twenty nine, Sears Roebuck and Company honor-built home. Was called the Hathaway House, cost one thousand, eight hundred and five dollars for the kit, which included everything for construction, but the foundation was sent by freight to our freight station in Newtown Township, because we know the people who build it. And taken by flatbed to two hundred Media Line Road. In doing a lot of research on Sears kid's homes, Newtown Township has quite a few of them. We're just trying to reach out to as many of the homeowners that we can find. And there's certain pockets, if you're familiar with Newtown, that have these homes. So we kind of know where they are and there's carvings in the beams that lets the people know that it was a Sears kid home, but we have to get in touch with those. They're considered historic throughout the country at this time, representing innovation, rise of the middle class and a unique form of mail order commerce in the early twentieth century. And it made homeownership accessible to thousands of middle-class families who couldn't otherwise do it. This home is maintained pretty much exactly as it was built with a small addition on the back. And it's pretty close to the high school. If you go by, you might not know it, but it's, I have the catalog we, we sent for that and it's exactly the same. Five sixty three, North Newtown Street Road. This is known as the Wyola Tenant Home. Flabberd Farmhouse was built approximately eighteen fifty. Served as home for the grounds, stable and farm workers for nearby Lissiter, Neal and Mineral Springs Farm. Part of the Wyola section, and people don't know, that was actually a little village in the Wyola section is where North Newtown splits, goes straight to Saint David's. Those, those buildings on the right, there's the Wheelwright. And there's the tenant home, then there's the James Price home. And then you cross over and Mineral Springs Farm, the Leadham House is set way back off the road there. And then public school number one is across the street and that was all a little village and there was a store. And there's a lot of data been written about that period of time. The last tenants that live there, that's now privately owned, were the stable and farm workers for Lissiter Farm and for the DePotts. Think, let's see, you have any questions? I could tell you.
Perfect. That was a good summary. Any questions from the board? Is there any comment from the public? All right, seeing none, I'll turn it over to supervisor Chanless. Actually, I'm sorry, let's go to fourteen point one and now I'll turn it over to supervisor Chanless.
Like to make the following motion or motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty five dash oh four. An ordinance pursuant to Article six of the Pennsylvania Municipalities Planning Code, Amending the Newtown Township Official Zoning Map to add two hundred Media Line Road, five hundred and sixty three, North Newtown Street Road, three hundred, three, five, two, three, Goshen Road, two eighteen, Second Avenue, one fourteen to one sixteen, North Newtown Street Road, thirty eight, forty, Gradyville Road and thirty eight, sixty five, Gradyville Road to the Historic Resource Overlay District Zoning Map as Class Two Historic Resources Proposed Map Amendment. Enacted and ordained this tenth day of November, twenty twenty five.
Is there a second? I'll second the motion. So the motion is made by supervisor Chanless, seconded by the chairs. Is there any board discussion? All is in favor, signify by saying aye. All is opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, I would just make note for the record, and you may have done this, but I missed it. Ms. Roberts-Lycap needed to step out and so she was not there for the vote, so it's four to zero.
That is correct. Thank you, Mr. Nice. All right, now a bump back up to thirteen point two for the, for the conditional use hearing for thirty three, one for Saint David's Road. And as the applicant gets prepared, I'll just make a note that we're about to have a conditional use hearing. There are some members in the public, so I will ask, is there anyone here for this hearing in particular? Can you just come to the podium, just state your name and address that we can have for the record, sir?
Joseph Fox, thirty eight Harrison Drive.
That's F O X, sir?
Yes.
Perfect. So Mr. Fox, just to kind of explain this high level, the way this process is going to work is we're going to have the applicant and its representative present the case. I'll then allow you to ask any questions that you might have for them. You will also have an opportunity, if you want to present anything, we'll give you that opportunity. For the general public, we will also allow for a public comment. Then after we hear everything, the board will, you know, in addition to asking questions probably throughout the process, then deliberate and make a decision. Do you have any questions on any of that? All right, thank you very much, sir. All right, a few gentlemen, can a dentist buy yourselves?
Yeah, John Finnerty.
And John, how do you spell that last name?
Finnerty is F like Frank, I N N E R T Y.
And what is your relationship to the application?
I own the property.
You're the owner? All right. And who are you, sir?
Mark Padula, that's Mark with a K, Padula, P A D U L A.
And you're the engineer?
Professional engineer, engineer for the project.
And Mark, you're a professional engineer in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania?
That's correct, yes.
Perfect. Have you been admitted to, I'm guessing, other boards for, as an expert?
Yes, many times.
Have you ever been admitted before this board as an expert?
I believe so, two thousand and three or four maybe from Melmar.
Okay, all right. Rich, I'm going to turn it over to you if you want to do any identification of exhibits from the township.
This hearing was published in the Delaware County Times on October twenty eighth, November third. Mark that as exhibit one.
Perfect. And then Rich, if you can, just to set the scene here on what this conditional use application is, and then we'll turn it over to the applicant to begin their, their presentation.
Yeah, essentially, there was an existing house on Saint David's Road at the address listed, it's kind of up a hill. It's significant slopes, the whole property is sloped. There was an existing house, the applicant picked that house down, built a new house with certain amenities, garage, driveway, realignment. It exceeded the, the, the things that he wants to do or allow in steep slopes by conditional use up to a certain map. And if you exceed that, you might have to go to the zoning board to get variances. So we already went to the zoning board. The plan was modified a couple of times. Decreasing the amounts of steep slope disturbance till ultimately zoning board was satisfied, the applicant was satisfied, they had a plan that could work that reduced the amount of steep slopes. Zoning board granted the necessary variances, but that still requires us to come back, do the conditional use portion. And that's why we're here.
Right. Mr. Finnerty or Mr. Padula, whoever wants to take it off, back to the reverse.
Good evening. My name is John Finnerty and I am the owner of thirty three, fourteen, Saint David's Road. I'm here this evening with Mark Padula of Padula Engineering. I recently purchased this property with the intent of developing it with a new construction home. Our plans were recently approved by the zoning hearing board and were given a positive recommendation from the planning commission on October twenty third. I would like to give a summary of those events to you. Our initial submission was made in April of this year requesting seven variances, two special exceptions and six conditional use ordinances. The first of three zoning hearing sessions was held in June and at that meeting, we were asked to work with the zoning officer to modify the site plan and reduce the required relief. As requested, revisions were made to the site plan and at the second meeting in July, four variances, one special exception and six sections of the ordinance for conditional use were put forward for consideration. At the July meeting, the board recommended we tighten up the disturbance to steep slopes and work with Andy, the zoning officer, to minimize the disturbance of steep slopes as best we possibly could. The final revisions were made and submitted for the August meeting. The final modified site plan requested three variances, one special exception and six section of, six sections of the, the ordinance for conditional use. The final submission was approved by the zoning hearing board. To build the plan that was approved, I require a conditional use approval for section one thirty four dash seven B dot two, B through F to permit construction of the house, stormwater management facility, septic system, retaining wall, patio and driveway in steep slopes. As previously stated, at the October twenty third planning commission meeting, I thoroughly reviewed everything we are proposing, answered all questions and addressed all concerns and received a positive recommendation from them. I'm asking that you approve the aforementioned conditional use requests and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Do you want to walk, Mr. Villa, do you want to walk us through? You know, a little bit more with regards to, from the engineering perspective, what it is that you guys are doing overall with the project? Kind of take it simple. This is the first time this board has seen the plan, so kind of walk us through. Mr. Finnerty did a good overview of, of the history of the application, but you talked to us about what was there, what's going on, what's proposed, I should say, and, and kind of how that is requiring the conditional use relief that you guys are seeking tonight. Yeah, we can give you a microphone too.
Existing condition.
You want the existing plan, right?
Yeah, this existing plan, but this is from the zoning exhibit, we have a seven or eight plan set that was submitted about a week or so ago that's most current. You got the next page if you would please? We'll start with sheet two of eight. Eight at September fifth, last revised October thirty first. This, this sheet two shows the existing house located basically in the center of the slate, if you see it right about here. And then there's two driveway entrances, one at the northern part of the property and the other down here at the south. One of the first things John wanted to do is eliminate that lower driveway for safety purposes. How far do you want me to go back? I mean, we could tell you the whole story from April or?
No, it's just, just a good summary so that we have an idea what it was.
All right, so that lower driveway was not the safest driveway, so John wanted to replace that. So that was one of the first things we wanted to do. Second thing, we tested for septic because we have to have a viable septic before we can do anything. The existing house had a cesspool located in front yard. Right about here, which is, I'd say, west, west center, center part of this property. That was demolished with the existing home. We did site testing for septic and stormwater on the same day. We got two viable locations, can you go to sheet three, please? Thank you. Two viable septic tests in the rear, one primary, one replacement.
Because when you walk away, this doesn't pick.
Thanks. And then we have one stormwater test up at the north central portion of the property. That was the only viable septic we had on the site. So with that in mind, we were able to start to lay out the house and determine what relief was going to be needed. Can we go to sheet four now, please? Sheet four, this is the, what's proposed on the site. And as John said and Rich said, over the course of three zoning hearing meetings, we ended up with this plan. The revisions, like John said, we started out with seven variances, we ended up with three and that was working with Andy and the zoning hearing. So we've ended up with this, we got the three variances approved, one special exception, which was for fencing in the front yard. And then I think Rich also said, after that, we came back because we needed conditional use and we needed. Initially, I think we needed six, we requested six conditional uses. When we did this design, we ended up needing a seventh one because we ended up needing stormwater management in the steep slope as well. But once Eric reviewed the plans, Eric determined that we had requested two conditional uses. Which were for very steep slopes. And what I did is I included them, so he had the option to look at and determine that our steep slope designation was correct. We didn't have any very steep slopes, so we removed those two and we ended up with five conditional use request. And that's what John mentioned when he said we needed B, sorry, B through F. And they involve the construction of the house in the steep slope, the driveway, septic system and stormwater management. And stormwater management was for the pipe that was put out in the front, wasn't there originally, so that's why we didn't have that in the first request. So that in a nutshell is what we're asking to build, that requires five conditional uses. John said we were here in front of the planning commission last month, explained everything, they were supportive of it. I believe Eric is supportive of it, I think Andy and Steve and I think Rich all have a good understanding of it. And think that what we've done is the best we can do with the site that we're given.
So Steve, and I might have missed this, taking the representation is accurate, the planning commission, I didn't see their review letter, but they they did vote to recommend this?
Yes, they did recommend it.
Any, any other suggestions or?
Subject to the October twenty four, twenty first, two thousand and twenty five, you know, any review letter, all the recommendations contained.
The October twenty first one? Yeah. Just a point of clarification, so the plan set shows seven conditional use sections or areas that you're seeking relief from, is it five or is it seven?
Five.
On the cover page, you've got seven.
Would, on this cover page?
The one, the one that was, the one that's dated September fifth, two thousand and twenty five, it looks like it was received by the township on September seventeen.
Two were for very steep slopes, but it was determined by our engineer that that wasn't.
So which are the two that are coming off?
Is there a revision date on your plans? It would be?
Can you scroll all the way up to the top?
Right.
Keep going, just keep going.
If you're looking at the small one, that's going to be the previous plan, this big roll, that one's going to have two left. It's also the same, that's up on.
I could point them out to you if you want.
That's fine, I have them here. I wanted to make sure, you kept saying five, I'm looking at seven. So it's one thirty four dash seven B two B, one thirty four dash seven B two C, one thirty four dash seven B two D. One thirty four dash seven B two E and one thirty four dash seven B two F. Correct. All right. All right, you have anything else you want to provide in terms of testimony?
I, I just had a couple of pictures that we need to further clarification.
And you might as well, if you want to bring them in, we'll mark that as A one, applicant's exhibit number one. If you can, just give one to the court stenographer as well, but give her this one because I'll mark it for her. Fuck, give this one to her.
There's one.
They won, yeah.
So I just, I provided this at the meeting with the planning commission. And the reason why I did that was just to kind of reiterate, kind of paint the picture of what we're doing. And in order to configure everything. And take away the, the lower end driveway, that was like the section in, in green. The section in orange was the house and then the section in the back. Was the disturbance of steep slopes for the septic field. The retaining wall was put in to minimize, strictly to minimize the amount of disturbance into steep slope. So we're trying to keep everything to an absolute minimum, but the biggest thing that I would like to point out with this picture is that the house is being. The old house has been since demolished, the new house is not being put in really the steep slopes. It's putting, we're putting it right back in relatively the same spot outside of any of the steep slopes. And, you know, working with Andy and the township on multiple occasions, this is the best plan we could come up with, with given the site conditions that we had. With where we could put the septic field, where we could put the stormwater management facility, which was on the, you know, if you're looking at this on the far left side, so that's the north. That's stormwater.
It's north.
North, north side, so, so that's, you know, that's more or less the big picture, but we just highlighted this to kind of help, kind of show the disturbance of steep slopes.
Anything else you want to present to us?
No, I don't, I don't think.
Okay.
And we'll make the, the actual, the actual plan dated October thirty first, twenty twenty five. The plan set that you were just looking at that had the five conditional use criteria, the five conditional use requests on there, that'll be applicant's exhibit two.
And we will admit your exhibits into the record. There's no objection to that from the board, so they'll be admitted. Mr. Fox, we'll turn to you first, sir. And Mr. Finnerty, I would recommend just giving that drawing that you provided to the board, A one, give that to Mr. Fox if he has a copy of it as well.
Your address was what? Thirty eight Harrison Drive. So our property is thirty eight Harrison Drive. Property at joint.
We're literally on the other side. Our property is probably one of the most historic properties in all of Newtown township. We have the Eddings House that was built in the late sixteen hundreds, early seventeen hundreds. We have a stream that runs through our property. We're exceedingly concerned of the runoff of this property into that stream into the house itself. So we use the house, it's meticulously maintained and so we're very concerned about that. The other thing we're concerned about is the view corridor. The previous house was set on an angle that did not look into our property. It was a single story ranch house. This house is obviously going to be much bigger and it's going to be looking directly into our, our house, right? So there were mature trees that were taken down, right? And so we're just concerned about the view corridor, we're concerned about the runoff and we're concerned about the impact to a very, very historic home.
All right. Anything else on that?
I don't think so.
Can you guys speak to the stormwater and the, what is the, what is the proposed height of the structure?
I don't have that exact, it's a two story colonial house, nine foot ceilings on the first floor and nine foot ceilings on the second floor.
Well, so what's that roughly?
I'm going to say left, left and worth one foot plus then your roof, yeah, it's less than thirty five.
Yeah.
Is the house pretty consistent with the houses?
On, on the street, on the street, up and down the street, it's the same, it's a two story colonial.
Most, most of the homes are ranchers.
You've got two newer homes along Saint David's.
Yes.
One's up at the intersection of, is it Dunming?
Dunming.
Right.
There's one brand new home there, there's another one down and then, like Joe said, the rest are still homes that have been there for, you know, fifty or sixty years probably. Yeah, right now is almost an even mix of new and old.
Was the old house a rancher?
The old house was a rancher.
Okay. What's the plan for landscaping? I know this is going a little bit out of the realm of the conditional use here.
So we are planning to, to put a tree buffer along the road, it is shown on the plan.
I can't, I can't.
So, so I'd be happy, I'd be happy to, so let's see, and explain some of this.
So it seems to, this is where?
Saint David's, right here.
I'm literally to the east.
Directly, and I know your house, directly across the street.
Right.
And there is, there's street trees, those circles, so those circles going up, they are street trees. There was a, I believe it was a magnolia tree that was recommended by John.
Osbach.
Osbach, he's the township arborist and he recommended a certain tree that would look stately and nice for the neighborhood. Opened up, opened up options there, but, but that was something that was recommended.
Tall with that tree.
I would have to Google it, I don't know.
Let me ask this question, Rich, if, for the conditional, after the conditional use hearing, because it's a single family, would this, would this, this want to go through land development, would it? Now, okay, right.
We have permit required for our structure, you don't have to comply with zoning.
And the arborist will be reviewing that with regard, now?
No, but the arborist already went through this.
This is, this is a recommendation from the arborist.
The arborist didn't, sure didn't take in consideration of your partner into it. And again, I haven't, it could be the greatest tree in the world, I have no idea, I, you know, I'm just, I can't say.
Yeah.
And look, we're not anti-development.
No, I hear you.
So it's just, you know, this is, you know, we're on thirteen acres, I mean, it's, it's a stunning property and so we're, and with this, we have a barn that goes back to eighteen fifty.
Yeah.
The house, you know, goes to, again, late sixteen hundreds. So it's, it's an issue and the fact that they had to get all these conditional uses, that's telling you something, right? I mean, it is a very steep slope.
Well, that was the point I was just about to make is that this is, we're kind of, I was trying to get information to kind of help you out to alleviate some concern that the applicant's project might have for you. But what we're talking about with regards to the construction of the home, the conditional uses are too drastic.
I understand, and I, and we, I didn't receive, maybe we received notice, I'm sure it was published, but we didn't, we didn't know about the zoning hearing. We knew that the house was taken down, we knew he wanted to build, but the only thing we had is tonight, so that's why I'm here.
And, and listen, you're more than welcome to be here and we appreciate you being here for tonight with regards to the conditional use, it really is just the disturbance of the steep slope and the very steep slope. For the ingress and the egress, quite frankly, for the property. With regards to the construction of the property itself, a lot of that would have been flushed out more at the zoning hearing board aspect because if they can't get the zoning relief, then they're not going to be able to move forward with it. But what I would recommend is depending on whatever the outcome is tonight, it sounds like you two already know each other, I would recommend. Okay, you said Joe, so, okay, so I guess you guys introduced each other today. What I would recommend is the two of you, you know, think the last thing anybody ever wants is to build something and you have a neighbor that's always angry and not satisfied with it. See if there's any sort of further cooperation that can be done.
Again, my, my issue is, and I think it needs to be explained tonight. There is, there is a stream, right, this is, this is a, this is a porous area, right? And is the runoff going to add more water coming over the street and into the property? And if it does, that's a big problem.
Understand, you had three issues, we got to the first two and then we'll have the engineer talk about the third one, which is the stormwater, you want to talk on the stormwater?
Press the concern of, sure, the streams runoff. So number one, I'm working with Eric on, on the project, we're going to be working over the next few weeks to essentially, first fifty foot of the property. And it's got the entire, they paid, bought in the neighborhood, fifty foot of, of, off the same. On the plan, so you talk about the runoff that was there at the property prior to us going in there. On a new construction home with this stormwater management facility, after that's all. But ultimately, all of the new stormwater management facilities that are going in, it's going to be less runoff out onto the creek. You know, because we're trying to get it in the stormwater management on the property, so all the rain leaders, feathers down to us, everything is going to go. That water's can then go down the driveway, if any water before it went out. But there is a, another inlet with a pipe to be able to slow that water down before it can start. And before we even get into building the house, that first fifty foot is all going to be stabilized from the concrete. For like on the sea, we, we, uh, from, after the, but I, specifically, just want every, tight, organized, but also I do care, I don't want any, that I'm going to run down. As far as you're concerned about the, the trees.
And, and so are we, so again, I'm looking to preserve that structure, right? I mean, you're, click it, look at paper mill, you have to spend two hundred and fifty thousand dollars there, right? So this is, it's a very sensitive area and a very sensitive property for the township, obviously we own it. But it's a very sensitive issue and look, I'm not, I can't, I'm not knowledgeable enough to tell you the stormwater management is, is great and it's going to be less runoff. All I hear is steep slope, you know, variances against the steep, steep slope. So, you know, it's, it's just a major concern, that's all.
Can you talk about the stormwater?
You're good?
Do you have your microphone? Yeah, you're good.
Eric, will you chime in if I'm not saying something correct? Okay. We had a good discussion with the planning commission about this. And what Eric said then, and it's true, is that currently any runoff that falls on this site flows downwards from, from the east to the west on the Saint David's Road. And by developing the property, we're going to capture runoff and control it, we're going to capture it with an underground stormwater management system. That's located north central, that's that rectangle at the top of the plan, it's kind of hatched in right above the house. That's the primary stormwater management facility, I'll point to it. Right here. The one that John's speaking of is an additional underground pipe that's going to be installed, somewhat parallel Saint David's. The one that John's speaking of is an additional underground pipe that's going to be installed, somewhat parallel St. Davids in the western portion of the site, right along the road here. The purpose of that is to capture runoff and slow it down. So that's pipes, I think it's twenty, it's twenty-four inch pipe. And at the end of the pipe, down here, the southern end is, is a four-inch orifice, I think is what we put on that. Don't, don't quote me on, well, you can quote me, but I think it's a four inch. But the idea is the water fills up that twenty-four inch pipe and then it's being released by a smaller orifice, reducing the flow. So we have two, two stormwater facilities, the one to the north is primarily for infiltration, but it does have overflow. It will go out a small pipe and go to a level spreader along the property line. And then the other stormwater management facility is primarily for runoff rate and will also be discharged through a smaller pipe to a level spreader. They're taking a step back. Runoff on the site falls on the ground and flows from the east to the west. There's no control or anything, so all the water that runs off goes to St. Davids now. Once we do the development, we're going to cap.
Two driveways, by the way.
Exactly, thank you.
Two driveways, not one, right?
Right. So we're going to eliminate one of those driveways, we're going to capture most of the stormwater from the site. Now, stuff that falls down slope isn't going to be captured, but that's what it's doing already. And your ordinance requires, I think we see two to one. So what we have to do is you create your baseline by saying, here's what's coming off the site right now. But you can only count eighty percent of the house as impervious. So right there, you're, you're saying it's a hundred percent impervious, but you can only count as eighty percent. And then there's also, if you have a lawn area, a lawn will infiltrate some runoff, but not, not all of it. You have to assume that that lawn is a meadow. A meadow is going to infiltrate more runoff. So right there, you're, you're taking two criterias and you're saying you're lowering our baseline for what we can discharge. But then we create the stormwater management to meet those criteria. And that's what we've done on this site.
Is there anything? And Eric, you, your office review, I'm looking at the review letter, you guys have reviewed the stormwater and you have no issues with any of it?
No, we have reviewed the stormwater, we're still, they have recently just resubmitted to address some of the comments. But regardless, they will have to comply with the various aspects and I don't see any reason why they would not.
Mr. Fox, you have anything else you want to add?
Nope, you go, I think you have it.
Alright, thank you.
Thanks.
Is there any other members of the public who have anything that they wish to provide on the application? Okay. Then we don't have a resolution for this right now.
Conditional use hearing, there's no land development associated with it. So if you're, if you want to, if you want to approve the conditional use application, it would be approves, you know, set forth in the October 31st, 2025 plans, subject to the review comments and requirements set forth in the Pinoni, October 24th, 2025 review letter.
What does the board wish to do?
Mr. Approve 13.2 conditional use hearing for 3314 St. Davids Road with all the conditions that Rich Cora just said.
Is there a second? Any board discussion? The only, the only thing I want to say is, you know, like to, to your, to your three points, Mr. Fox, you know, of the two, right? The one is the height, the one has to do with the landscaping, landscaping, I think, I would, I would encourage and hope that if this passes, that the two of you work something out. With regards to the stormwater. I mean, I think that what the engineer said there is pretty self-explanatory, but we do have a stormwater ordinance that is a higher standard than what the state requires. We've increased our stormwater ordinance to, to ensure that not just future developments, but current projects are protecting any surrounding other properties. It is the law that any project that is done, and it's not just unique in Newtown Township, it's across Commonwealth, they have to retain the stormwater on their own property. If they fail to do that, then there are multiple things that we as a township can do to enforce, to ensure that there's compliance with that. It's not like they construct it and they walk away, there's a long, you know, Eric's team will be out there throughout the construction, Eric's team will be out there post-construction to make sure that the stormwater retention system is working the way that it needs to work.
And to that end, there's, there's also a stormwater management agreement that's executed with the township that's enforceable.
For ten years, right?
Well, it's going to be inspected for ten years, but it's an indefinite, there's a, there's a, an escrow to cover inspections for ten years, but if there's still a failure after that ten years, it still has to be fixed.
And it's recorded against the property, correct?
It is recorded against the property.
Alright. Alright, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Alright, 14.2. Oh, and the record is closed, thank you, Paul, at nine oh five. Thank you. 14.2, can I get a motion approving ordinance 2025-05 Comcast Cable Franchise Agreement?
Turn the read.
Oh, yeah. I've had it.
Order to New Town Office of the Cable Franchise Agreement between the Township and Comcast of Southeastern Township Vina LLC enacted in order date this tenth day of November 2025. It's by motion.
Is there a second? Is there a second? Okay, I'll make that second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. 14.3, can I get a motion for the fence ordinance to be up for adoption at the November 24th, 2025 Board of Supervisors meeting?
So moved.
Motion is made by Supervisor Russo, seconded by Supervisor San Francisco. Is there any board discussion? Rich, you just want to, well, this, we'll discuss this actually at the actual hearing, I guess. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries, 14.4, can I get a motion authorizing the staff to send the campus boulevard rezoning amendment to both the county and township planning commissions for review?
So moved.
Motion is made by Supervisor San Francisco, seconded by Supervisor Russo, is there any board discussion?
Yeah, Rich, I just want to just clarify, so obviously this is an ordinance that we're considering and, and at the same time, we want input from the boards or the, the bodies that exist to give us input on things like this, right? So by, by voting on this, we're not saying yes or no per se to the ordinance, but we're sending it out to get input on.
The ordinance presented to you by staff, where you can move to pass it, there's two planning bodies by statute are there to review these things and make comments to you for your consideration. So all this does is say, go to that, go to that process, go to the planning bodies, and then it comes back to you to look at with their comments to see if that's something you want to pass or not.
Any other questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, section 15, board comment, is there any board comment? The only thing I want to say, because I missed it since I was on virtual, my, my wife's car got in a fight with a couple of potholes, it seems. And so she tore through two, two tires, which is why I was late. But I just wanted to say for tomorrow, for all the veterans in Newtown Township, to wish them a, a happy Veterans Day and thank you for your service. I think that there's no other example where that is evident than what just took place last Tuesday, where we were able to have an election because of their service. And I would be remiss if I did not acknowledge our very own Lieutenant Colonel Richard Skora, retired. So thank you, Rich, and thank you to the rest of the veterans. Section 16, public comment, is there any public comment? Happy Cavalier, public comment is for anything you want, Happy Cavalier.
Very proud, Leonard, Mary Kim Bloom, we won for the National Newtown Square Recognition of Celebrating Heritage. So that was their award for the, I guess it was for the country, they travel all over the town, they were here in June. Just wanted to bring it, he ran out the door, but there it is.
Perfect. Any other board comment? And I should also mention for Veterans Day, our Command Master Sergeant Chris Young, who is also our fire chief, he's not here, but his boss is here, which is Mrs. Young in the back. So let him know, I gave him a shout out. Alright, this meeting is adjourned, thank you, everyone.